Okay, we'll call to order the meeting for the city of Tracy for May 10. Stand for the touch of a lead tent.
The United States of America and two other countries, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nobody's praying tonight?
Nobody's praying for us tonight.
Two more months and then we can be dogged?
Wait.
What do you want?
Possibly.
I lost my thing. I brought that for a second.
Yep, go for it.
I lost my connection thing. So, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Any additions of any kind, sir?
No, there's no additions. The resolution for the donation is slightly different because it got added to, but it doesn't change the agenda.
Motion to approve is written.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? All over the area?
Aye.
Of those, motion carries. Anybody from the audience would like to talk about something that is not on the agenda?
I'll jump up now and do this.
Okay.
My name's Tony Petersen, I'm here representing VFW Post 871. Last month, we had our monthly meeting and wanted to make some donations throughout the community in recognition of veterans issues and such. So, we have in the past given the city some money for some flags. I'd like tonight to present a check for flags for the city to replace them. And that being said, also, after reading your paper last week there, the work that Jim and Sue Coyle have done in the VMC, I'd like to run a donation through the city to reimburse them for their efforts. So, I have a check for that also.
Thank you.
Stand up and take a check, or you want me to bring them over to the mayor?
Do you want to just, do you want to, does Claire want to, do you want to take a picture, Pierre?
Let me just come back here?
You know, I was gonna bring my wheelchair that stood up today, but I didn't get to go home and get it.
I gotta come mess things up, I'm sorry. So, this way and this way.
You want to owe money, I saw, they come outside, they could do that too.
Yeah.
We know who you are.
Yeah.
Oh, that's the right side off. Yep.
There you go.
Then we can do that again.
One, two, three.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tony. Tell them, thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
I've not done yet. Seth, you got a minute? I've got another donation here from the VFW to the Wheels Museum. It's a donation for the veterans building that they're planning. So, if you'd like to step up and have a handle at that one for me. Get out here for the pair can see it.
Thanks, Tony.
There's your check. I never do that right.
Seth, you gotta look at me.
Look at the camera.
Thank you. That's all I had, thank you very much.
Thanks, Tony.
So then, do we need to approve that resolution too? So, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-52 for the donation to the VFW for the purchase of the flags in the VMC display.
I'll second it. First and second, roll call?
Koopman?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Schoens?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Landay?
Aye.
Teigs?
Aye.
Mayor Cornyn?
Aye.
Moving on to the consent calendar approvals.
I'll make a motion to approve the April 26 minutes, the approval of the municipal accounts payable and the payroll without breakthrough beverage, approve the March 1st and April 5th fire relief association, and approve the Resolution 2021-53 to approve the fire contracts. Second?
First and second, can we have roll call, please?
Schmidt?
Aye.
Schoens?
Aye.
Landay?
Aye.
Teigs?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Koopman?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve municipal accounts payable for breakthrough beverage.
Second?
First and second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Schoens?
Aye.
Landay?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Koopman?
Aye. Neen?
Tal?
Aye.
And Mayor Cornyn?
Aye.
She's testing you.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing.
Yeah, I was right on it.
You were right on it. Next we move to mayor and council communication. Does anybody have anything they would like to talk about tonight?
I got a question. Eric, are we hiring another full-time street employee?
No, it's a replacement person. Martha Smith took a position in the Twin Cities, and so that position has been vacated, and so we're replacing for that particular position. So, it's not another person, but it's a replacement.
One other question. Who is INS?
ISG.
Oh, it says INS in the report.
I and S?
INS.
It used to be INS, and then they changed to ISG, so I'm sure it's probably something that you want to update in the system.
Yeah, I think it's the same company, it's just a different name.
Another question. What's, what happened down by the bank on that bump out?
Can you be more specific about what happened?
I will. It's broke loose from the curb.
I don't know. If you have more, Shane, why don't you come up actually to the podium so we can? There's some problems with the concrete at the bank location?
Yeah, it's, have you noticed it, Shane?
I noticed one spot, I don't know if it's one-
It broke loose. It was laying in the street, so apparently someone from the street department cleaned it up.
Okay.
And my question is, is this gonna, if this continues, who's paying for all this? Well, they should have the other warranty.
It depends on a couple things, you know. First of all, there is a warranty, and actually Shane and I were just talking about this earlier. It'll be sometime later this summer, we'll do a full inspection of everything to see if there's any additional warranty work. We know there's some things that happen to happen this spring because there's sod that still needs to be put down and replaced, you know, that we couldn't do in the fall. We didn't want to put that down for the winter, so they have to do that for sure. Then we'll do a full inspection of the system, see if there's anything else that would potentially be warranty work. I couldn't tell you for sure whether or not that would be warranty work or not, you know. I mean, it's conceivable that it's normal wear and tear, or an accident, or a snow truck or something, I don't know, I haven't looked at that, but we'll look into it.
Is it the one on the east side of the road?
It's by the drive-in.
Yeah, I saw there was a little-
The drive-up, I should say.
Piece missing there earlier today when I went by there, so haven't had time to look at it real close to see if it was, if there's a scrape mark there, or if it was some removal equipment, or what it would have been, but-
Well, I think it had to be something else, Shane, other than the street equipment, because this happened after the snow was gone.
What would you like us to do?
I, my question is, if this continues on this, I'd like to know who's replacing this and who's gonna pay for this.
The answer is that it depends, as I said. It depends on whose responsibility it is. There is a warranty associated with it, and if it's part of the warranty work because of poor workmanship, or it wasn't done the way it was supposed to, or whatever, then the contractor, Dunick, would pay for it. If it's because somebody bumped it, or, you know, something else happened that was normal wear and tear, or an accident, then it would be that, that's responsible. I couldn't, it depends, you know. I know that's not the best answer, I can't tell you that it is always going to be on the contractor, because there's, you know, it's out there in the open and things happen. And so, we'll look into that one specifically, and we will for sure attempt to try to get as much warranty work done as we possibly can. So, you know, our goal would be to put as much in that as possible, but at this point, we haven't done that inspection, we won't do that until later on in the year, because you want to give it as much time as possible, but also give the contractor enough time to fix it. So, it'll be sometime August or September, maybe after May or June.
Is your concern that people are obviously running into it versus driving around it?
I'm not sure, Jerry. I guess my concern is if they are hitting it and this is happening, we're gonna have to figure something out.
Yeah, because it's gonna continue.
It's gonna continue, not just at the bank, all the way down Main.
I'm not sure if it will or not.
I'm not either, but I'm just saying if it happened there-
Well, we don't know what happened there.
We don't know.
So, you can't say necessarily that we know what's going to happen, because we don't know what happened. So, what I would ask is if you give us some time to take a look at it, then we'll get back to you with what we guess had happened, because my guess is there's no pictures of, you know, what happened, and then give you the best answer that we can as to how it's gonna be fixed, if it's a problem across the board, is it a specific issue with the bank, I don't know, we'll look at it.
Jeff, I'm gonna ask you, either you or Eric, with the company that did the drawings and everything, do they do anything in their other communities that make those bump outs stand out so people don't? Because I know the one down there just across from the bank, that's hard to see at night when you're coming from the north, and I'm just wondering if something like that happened that corner or not, but if you could check to see what they do to try to make-
And more visible to people?
Yeah.
They'd have to put like the little reflector things on them.
Yeah, we could potentially put some reflectors on the curb or something, you know.
In the wintertime too, it's almost impossible to know where they're at. We know they're there, but we don't know where they're at until you bump them or whatever, but, you know, after the broom goes over, it's a little easier, but I know even the broom machine has fallen off the curb, because, you know, it used to be a straight shot, now, and they don't all bump out in the same area, so if you find one, it's not necessarily the same as the other side.
But I can, I can look where we got a couple of examples.
I just have a feeling if it's because somebody's running over, the company's gonna say it's not their fault.
I, I'm sure that's accurate.
So then we're gonna be paying over, so-
If it continues to happen, you know, I mean, we don't, we don't know that, you know? And I would, I would argue that any curb is subject to being run over by a car or something else.
Well, I don't think there is app to when it's just along these streets versus a bump out.
Your alternative is to tear it out and rip for it, if that's what you really want, you know? I mean, otherwise, otherwise, we leave it.
Well, that's why I'm asking Jeff to check with the company, see if there's something we could do, because I don't think this is gonna be the first and last time.
Yeah, we'll look at it. Yep.
Okay.
One other question. I'm on a roll. Do we have, Jeff, do we have an agreement with the Eagles in writing, signed, sealed, and delivered?
We're working on it today.
That's part of my report, actually, a little bit later I was gonna give.
Okay.
Done with me?
For now? For now.
Don't go far.
Then I would just have one thing, just remind people that when they're mowing their lawns, they're not supposed to blow it into the street. I mean, I've seen it, I've seen it on TV and everything, but it's rampant again, knowing the first mowing of the year, it's just walked by and half the streets are green.
I don't know how to control that.
It is code violation, you know, to do that, how you control it, I don't know, because by the time it gets blown in the street and then blown around, you can't even tell whose yard it is.
Into the lawn.
So, you know, it's a difficult one.
There's always gonna be some that fall into the gutter and everything, but when you see people going by and they're blowing it five feet out into the street, it's like, it's a little obvious as to what's going on.
Yeah, yeah.
Eric can take care of that in the paper. Headline.
Eric?
Yes, sir.
This weekend is cleanup, right?
That's correct.
Probably we shouldn't mention that.
Yep. I won't be there, Diane. On Saturday, yep.
Okay, you better get somebody to replace you.
Actually, Diane.
I nominate coup, how's that?
I just wanted to make it so we remember it.
Yep. Diane, Ashley, why don't you, since council member brought it up, why don't you talk about the time and the location for the cleanup?
So, it's gonna go from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and it's gonna be held at the, next to the old liquor store and the empty parking lot there. There is a list of things that are gonna be accepted and things that can't be accepted, that's in the paper, it's on the website, it's posted on the front door. We do have some flyers in the main office for people that want to come and grab one. They are welcome to do that.
Is this when you bring the items over, then you pay?
Yep, you can bring the items to the site and pay them. We do accept checks, cash, but at this point, we don't have the ability to do credit cards yet, unless they want to come to the city hall on Friday and pay for it, and they would give them a receipt, and then they would just have to bring that receipt along with them when they come with their items.
Is there a charge for everything that they bring?
Nope, there are some things that there isn't a charge for, and that's indicated on the flyer that we put together.
I noticed when I drove through Wyndham today, they must be having a citywide cleanup, because everybody had their stuff on the curbs.
Pipestone does still.
It's my turn again.
Okay, any more further communication? We will move on to the staff report?
I guess that's me. You have my regular work plan report in your packet already, I do want to go over just a few kind of highlights, particularly for the folks, you know, out there listening. We are, other than the cleanup, there's another event coming up that's the first one we've ever done. This year, the Women's Expo is being held in Central Park on June 5th, and we have been talking about doing a Movies in the Park program for the summer, which we're going to do two dates this summer, and we thought it would be a great idea to have movies in the park the same night as the Women's Expo at Central Park. So, June 5th, we will be showing a free movie, and I understand there'll be a food truck there, and I think also some popcorn as well for folks, and so it's kind of a fun, full family event. We'll start showing the movie, you know, about dusk, but we'll start, people can come and, you know, gather before that, or they might even be there for the Women's Expo. And ultimately, we're asking people that we're not gonna provide chairs or anything like that, so you'd want to bring your own lawn chairs, or blankets, or whatever that you want to sit on and watch, and we have also gotten a license to show the movie, The League of Their Own, which we thought was a great movie to show on the day of the Women's Expo, since it's about baseball and women's baseball, and it felt like a good family film, and so that's what we're showing that night, and we certainly hope that everyone can come out, you know, for that event. And so, that's kind of a cool thing that we're gonna try this summer, and then we're gonna have a second one in July. I don't think we have the movie, do we have, we don't have the movie selected for that one yet, but the second one in July is gonna be July 17th. And same kind of situation, except obviously not the Women's Expo that day. The second, I was gonna mention, council member, about June 1st is the day that we're slated to open at the Eagles. The governor, as you know, kind of loosened his restrictions, and we were able to hire, we think we've got three additional part-time people in addition to our regular part-time person to help staff it, like we had talked about. We did review a lease today, and we had some changes that Jeff and I made to it, and then we've got to review some of the insurance requirements tomorrow before we can officially get that out there, but ultimately, that'll happen on June 1st. Any questions about that?
What hours of that for the Eagles?
Oh, you would ask me that question? It's in the, it's in the, as soon as I say it, Ken Wynn's gonna tell me that that's not what it was supposed to be.
Isn't 11:30?
11:30 to 4:30.
11:30 to 4:30, thank you, because I couldn't remember if it was 11 to 4, 11:30 to 4:30. Appreciate that. And then, we'll be open a couple Saturdays for the Golden Age Club too, but that has yet to be determined when exactly that is, what Saturdays.
Did you have enough help lined up?
We do, yes. We had three applicants, and we're gonna, we're gonna hire all three.
Good.
Can I ask you a question about the Women's Expo?
Yes.
How late does that go this year?
I think it's 5:00. So, there's a little bit of time between that and the movie. Of course, it's a public park and people can come. The food truck that's gonna be there is gonna be there all day, and so theoretically, you could come and-
Have supper.
And have supper, yeah, you could. Could, so we'll see how it goes.
Is there popcorn there?
Yep. Can I say that the circus, no, I can't. Yes, there's gonna be popcorn. We're working on a sponsor for the popcorn, but I can't, I can't say that yet, because I don't think it's signed, sealed, and delivered. But, but yes, that's the idea.
You know, is the screen gonna be like on the-
We're gonna put it up on the stage. Yep, yep. It's actually a really cool thing, because apparently Plum Creek Library has a whole screen that they do for these kinds of things, so that we were able to get that for free from them. And then, in addition to that, Val's writing a little bit of a grant for it at the same time, so we just have to rent some speakers, and we had to pay a few hundred bucks for the movie to, because to show it publicly. So, all in, we don't think this is gonna cost more than $200, $200, $300. Which is a really, you know, I mean, this is a really reasonable, you know, activity for the community. So, we'll put it up on the stage, and then people can, you know, that way it's a little elevated, and, you know, we'll see how it goes.
Hopefully, people turn out.
Hopefully do, yeah.
In case of bad weather, I hate to say this, any plans to move it indoors, or would that just be what?
I, we don't have an indoor option at this point, so let's just pray it doesn't rain, I guess.
The Women's Expo is rain or shine.
Yeah.
And the movie, I guess, we thought about it, we talked about it, it could be that we could possibly use the VMC here if it was raining that night, but we haven't really talked about it.
The issue is gonna be the COVID restrictions. One of the reasons why we're doing all this stuff outside, like the Women's Expo, is that there's no restrictions on crowd sizes or anything else like that outside, no mask orders outside right now, so, you know, it's a way to do it. So, we'll see, let's just hope it doesn't come to that. The next thing that I wanted to show you, unless there's any questions about the Eagles or about the movie in the park, the next thing I wanted to show you, I actually put an example in front of you, but we've been working on the website, the new website, and we've kind of got a draft of the homepage. I want to get a little bit of feedback from you, if you have any, and let me just kind of walk through this a little bit, because what you're looking at is just a static page here, so it might be a little confusing. So, that, there's a green bar at the top, and it has a little X on there. That's only, would only be in use if you had like an announcement, like if you wanted to say, "Movies in the park tonight, you know, 7:00 PM," or whatever.
That would be up there in that spot then?
Yeah, it'd be up there in that spot, and it would scroll, but that would just be an option if you wanted to use it. Normally, it wouldn't be there.
Would we need to put that on the sign out to Subway?
We could, we could do that, that's a good idea. Yeah, yeah, we should do that. Let's make a note of that. But, you know, ultimately, you have kind of the main, you know, main banner at the top with your navigation. This picture you see with the train on there, there's actually, would scroll across multiple pictures, and so there's some options that I put up on that. Let me wind this out a little bit, so you can see it a little better. But, the train is one example of a picture that we could do, and then we've got some other, you know, examples as well of pictures, you know, so it would essentially kind of, you know, scroll through different pictures of town, and I actually chose these pictures because they kind of represent a lot of what we talked about in terms of what we wanted to describe the town as. And so, those pictures would scroll across there, and then, there's these green buttons down here in the bottom, these are kind of like quick buttons, so like if you wanted to pay your water bill, you can click that, if you wanted to get a building permit, you can click that, and then there's the little arrow here, and you could click through that. There's about 10 of those, so you could get to kind of a quick item if you wanted to. Then at the bottom, we've got, you know, four boxes, and that would go to some additional information, so, and this is just for position, there's, these obviously isn't real copy at this point, but you've got a welcome location that would kind of, you know, describe what Tracy's all about, and, you know, welcome to the city, maybe that's a letter from the, you know, the mayor or something like that. Information like news, tell you about the street project, we'll tell you about other things that are happening, you know, stuff like that, information about the community and city projects, and then at the bottom, you've got, this is a picture of Swift Lake Park that we kind of liked as a bottom navigation. And so, it's got, this blue is generally is the same blue that's in the logo that you've already approved, and then we kind of chose a kind of a green as an accent color, so there's a little bit of green in there, and, but not as a dominant color, but, but in general, you know, this is the direction that we're kind of thinking of going, and then, you know, after we get a sense for this, then we'll build out the additional pages and write the full, you know, text for it and whatnot, but I wanted to give you a sense for kind of where the, where the website was going. Do you all have any feedback for us, or what are your thoughts?
Will there be some links for employment, real estate, homes for sale, schools, that kind of thing?
Yeah, some of that is gonna go in your community section, you know, where you would include things like, you know, information about the schools and whatnot. Our plan is to develop a second website as well, which would be TracyMinnesota.com, and that would be more information about the EDA, the chamber, and the community more as a whole, and then some of that would link directly from these pages to that other website. And so, some of that would be there, and what was the other, what was the first thing to use? Was that?
Employment.
Oh, employment, yeah. So, if we had employment, you could put that in a couple of places. You've got under news here, you've got employment opportunities, you can also put it, if you wanted to make it one of the buttons here, you could do that as well, and then I would imagine that it would be under, you know, one of these top navigations under either the city departments, if you wanted to go to that location, but yeah, absolutely, employment will be one of the, one of the links on the website.
Will the city be selling ads on that page?
No, no, we wouldn't do that, I don't think that's the right thing to do, no.
So, if you have a help wanted or something, it'd be, it'd be a non, everything would be free of charge then?
Well, we wouldn't put other people's content, like they're looking for a job on here, it would, this is just for city-related information, that's it.
Okay, but let's say a business downtown had a help, had some job openings, would that be on this site?
I don't contemplate putting that on this site, no.
Okay, that's what I was wanting.
No, no, unless you think we should, but that wasn't what I, you know, from my perspective, I think it's really just a city, about the city, city services, the government, you know, things like that.
And I think if we get into, I think if we do other employment stuff, we're gonna start stepping on fingers and somebody's feelings will get hurt that my job wasn't put out there.
Well, it would be nice though, that there could be links though to go elsewhere.
I think on our other website, TracyMinnesota.com, which is gonna include the chamber, you know, we could include some links there to like, because I know that the Marshall Chamber website has links to jobs in the community, for example, and I think that that's a more appropriate place than the city website, but we could do that there potentially. Yep.
Can I give you my opinion about something?
Sure.
Unless my eyes are really getting really bad, that, our logo on the top of that page does nothing.
Well, it's small in this context. Are you saying it's too small?
I can't see it, I mean, I can't see- I can't see it, I mean, I can't see the little chain that's in there.
It's, 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 it may, that's a good question, it is small, it, it probably could stand to be a little better.
It's like blue, and then you can't see, like, on the bottom, you can see it, but there you can't...
It's a little easier to see on the bottom, isn't it?
Yeah, it is, much better to see on the bottom.
And it's bigger, though, too.
Yeah, and I think that's probably one of the reasons why. Do you think it's too small? I mean, we certainly could make it a bigger feature.
Even if it's made that blue inside white, like our normal logo is, we said we wanted it white.
So rather, revert, it's rather than doing, the reverse out is what this is, is what it's called when it's all one color like that? So rather than doing that, you'd rather see the way the logo looks itself, okay?
That does nothing.
Yeah, okay. I have a pen around here somewhere. No, I got one right here, it's just got buried in my papers. We'll take a look at that, see what we can do to make that a little more readable. So what do you think, do you like the direction generally?
Yeah, I think it's impressive.
Okay, okay. Well, then, we'll, we'll continue to press ahead. Our hope is, is that we'll have something, you know, this, this summer that's, that's up and running, and we'll go from there, so...
And you're working with, like, a contractor or...
Yeah, it's this, it's the same company that does our current websites, called GovOffice. And, and so they're designing it, they, they also host our website, too, and they're, they're designing it as part of the package, yep. One more, one last thing. This is kind of a, a timing issue, we're, we're getting ready to bring back, you might remember, we had this discussion, a couple discussions earlier this year about the, about the ponds decommissioning project. And our engineer's estimate on that right now is about $3.3 million, which is a significant amount of money. Now, we have it because we haven't completed the entire, you know, Phase 3 street project yet. We, we have a plan of what we want to do with the remaining money, is after this Phase 3A2 project is complete. And we want to bring that plan to you to kinda get your blessing. It involves the county and getting some money from them for Center Street, which they engineer, has, the county engineer has told us that they, they believe that they can do. And it also involves moving some other, doing the, it obviously involves doing the pond, but a good portion of Phase 3 and 4, if not all of them, are probably not going to be done if you accept this plan. We would like to bring this to you, actually, I was talking to Kyle from ISG earlier today. We wanted to bring this to you in a couple of weeks, on the 24th. The glitch is that Kyle is supposed to be on an island at that time, and so our choice is either on vacation, I can't tell him not to take a vacation. So, so my choice is, we can push it a couple of weeks into June if you want, we could handle it on May 24th, or we could do kind of a special meeting the week before to go over it. It just depends on how urgent, you know, a matter is, is for you. I'm okay with pushing it, or talking about it on the 24th without Kyle, because I think we can intelligently do that, Shane and myself, but, 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 but that's up to you, if you want, if you want Kyle there, we have to do it some other time besides the 24th.
Well, could we do it the week before that?
We, we could, we'd have to have a special meeting?
Yeah.
We can, if that's what you'd like to do, we certainly can.
Is it gonna slow any process down if we wait?
I don't think so, Shane, do you have an opinion on that, if we, if we...
I don't think it will.
I, I don't think so either, because honestly, we've gotta, it would be three more weeks, though, after the 24th, because there's three week, there's five Mondays in, in, in May. We don't plan to, if, if you wanna, if, if you accept the plan, we wouldn't probably bid the ponds project until later in the summer, anyway. And it's gonna take us a little while to work out some things with the county, so I don't think it hurts anything. I just wanted to give you the option.
So you're gonna bring this plan to us, so then we'll have a week or two or three to kinda mull it over, or we gotta make the decision?
Well, that's, that's a good question, what would be your preference?
Give me time to think about it.
Okay, then let me, let me do this, okay? Why don't I put together a memo, you know, with all the information in it for you? And I could do that probably within the next, as much as the information as I have at this point, I can do that in the next week or two. That'll give you time to kinda review it, and then we can present it to you, and then at that point, you can decide, do I wanna do something about it now, or do I need more time to mull it? But I wouldn't wanna mull it much, much past June, to be honest with you, just so we can keep our timetable. Because all of this project has to be complete by pretty much the end of 2022. Otherwise, we could lose some of our grant funding from rural development, we don't wanna do that, because it has to be completed by that timeframe. So...
Does it sound realistic to you get us the information before the meeting on the 24th?
Yeah.
Then we can discuss it on the 24th, then we can, you know, we'll have time to mull it over, whatever. And if we need to meet in June with Kyle to come up with the final plan, we could do that.
We could do that.
I guess I personally would like a little time to digest $3.3 million expense.
Yeah, I don't blame you.
We gotta have it anyway, I understand we gotta do it, but I'd like to have time to...
If we would get the information before the meeting on the 24th, we could discuss it at the 24th meeting.
And then bring Kyle back in June.
Yes, and then in June, we could make a decision, yes.
Yeah, yeah, that works for me, I mean, I, I think that's a good suggestion, yeah, okay.
So then, the night that Kyle would be here, we'd have to decide, if we had some questions, he'd have to answer?
We wouldn't have to decide, we'd probably want to decide.
We'd want to, if we could.
Just to keep pushing it along.
On the 24th, if we had specific questions, we can come up with the questions and everything, so...
And if, if we know the answer, we'll tell you, if we don't know the answer, then we can refer to Kyle, and he can, you know, talk about it the next meeting. Yeah, that's, that's fine, we'll, we'll plan for a presentation on the 24th without Kyle, and kind of the broad strokes. We'll give you as much information as we can ahead of time on the 24th, and then bring Kyle back in June.
Ahead of the 24th?
Ahead of the 24th, I'll give you information, and then bring Kyle back in June, so we can discuss it a little bit more and answer any questions you have of him.
I have no idea that I'd have any revelation to change anything, but it's...
I think that's really smart, you know, this is not a decision to be taken lightly, because you're talking about a pretty major expense, and it basically changes the second half of the project completely.
But our hands are kinda tied, we have to do it.
We, our hands are pretty tied on that piece?
We don't have a lot of choice.
Yeah, I understand that, I guess, I don't know what...
The, the big question is, what do you do with the second half of the money, you know, after you've paid for the, the pond decommissioning? And our belief is, is that what we should do is maximize the amount of dollars we have. And the best way to do that is to bring the county in to do Center Street at the same time, and that way, we can... Now, some of those improvements under the ground weren't slated to be done until later, but we feel it's important to do them now, because we have an opportunity to bring a lot of money in from the county at the same time, and deal with a street that's an important street in town and a major problem.
But this is the stuff you're gonna get to us?
This is the stuff we're gonna get to at the next meeting, yes, yes.
And the county doesn't have a timeline, when they need to have it done, is, they'll work with our timeline?
They would have liked to have done it already, but they were under the impression that we didn't want them to do it until we fixed our street, under the ground, in the, in the water and sewer. And this is a little bit different philosophy, you know, rather than, and honestly, some of those projects weren't even slated to be done until Phase 3B, which would be in like 2028 or 2029. You know, so that doesn't make any sense to us to wait that long to get Center Street fixed, the county wants to fix it, we wanna fix it. So there's, yes, they, they, we told them, actually, the last time we talked to them, that we would want them to do it in 2022. They would have to be done in 2022. So that's part of their budget cycle, and the county commissioners would have to approve that, I mean, it's, it's, it's gonna be a process to get that done. That's all I have, Mayor, unless there's any questions about my report, or anything else you'd like to know, any information about.
Who would like to go next?
Oh, we have new business.
This isn't the...
So we don't have to do anybody else?
No, we don't have to do anybody else, not, 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 not the first me. The next, the next item, Mayor, is, is, um, the airport driveway parking lot project, as Shane can, can talk about what this is. And this is a pretty straightforward low-bid situation.
Shane, can you hear your mask, probably can hear you. Thank you.
All right, so I, I attached a memo in the council packet for the driveway paving at the airport. Hey, that's easier to read. So the low bid landed for that project. Back in January, this was brought up as a, to do the design and get it out for bid. So now we're at the bidding process, just a little background. $139,968 was the low bid, and that was with Dunick. This is a 25% city and 75% grant from MinDOT to this project. As I mentioned, this was in the, in the CIP and budgeted for 2021. If you had any questions on, on that, I did attach also the bid recommendation letter from Ballack Engineering. Should end right with it, so... If you had any questions on that.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-54, to approve the bid to Dunick for the parking lot and the driveway at the airport.
First and second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wait a minute, you're too fast for me. When they pave that, do we have to do any work underneath the pavement to get it ready?
That's included in the project, there's a few culvert crossings that they'll, they'll rip out and redo. So everything underneath the, the pavement will be new.
Okay, yeah, so we don't, just put pavement over bad ground, or...
Yeah. We used to do that, and that's not a very good plan.
I did see that in there, but then that doesn't mean it ain't there, I guess.
Yep.
I'm ready, Mayor.
All right, Coopman?
Aye.
Seeks?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye.
Landay?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Towns?
Aye.
Mayakorn?
Aye.
Thank you, Council.
Shane, I've got one question, it's your favorite subject, potholes, when are we gonna do those?
Um, last, I talked to them, it'll be late May, it sounds like possibly this week, the asphalt plant will get up and running. That's if everything goes well, usually a few hookups on their end, too. And then, they had to do a couple of communities that were on their list ahead of us, but the other, last I talked to them, it was late May, so...
It's in a couple of weeks, then?
Yep, it's coming up real soon, so, and there's some doozies out there, so... It'd be nice to have that portion of it done, and, and then August for the, the seal coating, so... Thank you.
Well, the next item, Mayor, is regarding the multipurpose center design RFP. I know this is something that the community has been waiting for, for a while, as, as have you. I wanna, you know, for the record, talk a little bit about the process, as you know, you approved the RFP to go out sometime ago, about six weeks ago. And it included four components. First of all, kind of a feasibility of the final two options, which is either the remodel of the liquor store or building a new building. That includes a second component of community engagement on what the space and the activity's gonna look like. I know that's really important to the community, that they make sure that they have input onto what's, what's going on, and we made that a requirement of this, and so there will be public input. Number three is, is design, and that includes full construction documents, and then some assistance on, on funding options, which is one of the next conversations we're gonna have to have, in terms of how we're gonna pay for this, and how much we can afford, and things like that. We weren't sure exactly what we were gonna get, you know, out of this deal, because there's not an architect within 80 or 90, or engineer qualified to do this within 80 or 90 miles of here. And so we kinda cast a wide net to see what, what we would get when we solicited these. And we had a walkthrough day, where I think we had 11 or 12 firms here, where we took a look at the liquor store, we walked them through town, and showed them where the sites for a new building might be, and, and whatnot. Jeff and, and Shane participated in that as well, and we had a roundtable discussion with a lot of the firms, and they asked us questions, and we answered them as best that we could. Ultimately, to our surprise, we received 16 proposed, 16 responses, 16 proposals, all of them from qualified firms. I, I've never seen this many before, you know, under this circumstance. Maybe we were a little overzealous in casting a wide net, because we were concerned we wouldn't get any, or maybe people just want a lot of work, I don't know. But, but it's a pretty impressive list. From our perspective, there's not one on there that's a bad one. Any of these firms could do this work, and they all would do good work, there's, there's no doubt about that. So, in the RFP that you approved, it, this is a, this is based on a, kind of a, this is a best value contracting situation, so this is not a low bid award, just so you know, like the, like the paving contract. I don't think you can evaluate these kinds of services just on a low bid. You have to look at other things like quality of service and experience and things like that. And so we put together a point system that was in the RFP, so they knew exactly what they were shooting at, that included their capacity to do the project, the fees associated with it, and their experience. From that, we then, Jeff Carpenter, Shane Daniels, and myself, read through all 16 of the RFPs individually. We did not collaborate on this initially, individually read through all of them, and ranked them in these different categories, to end up with a point total, and on a, on a 100-point scale. What you have in front of you, which is on page two of the council communication, is the point totals for all of these firms as, as they were ranked. And the total on the far right, which...
It's in the packet.
It's in the packet.
It's on the, send your computer.
Why, but I cannot get my computer to come up.
I can give you mine.
I shut down and turned it off.
This is what it looks like.
Oh, here, he's got it.
But I can't give it to you, I'd like to see it.
Here, Jerry, pick this one.
Number, I don't know off the top of my head.
49, 480 something.
Ultimately, what we did is, we ended up ranking all 16 firms on a scale of 0 to 100. And the, the numbers that you see are essentially, you know, a composite number. So I, I took Jeff's scores, and my score, and, and Shane's, and we added them all up, and ended up with kind of a composite score. Overall, the top three firms, you know, from, from top to bottom, and none of these were the least expensive firms, although they were towards the end, towards, towards the least expensive. There were a couple really pretty expensive options on here that I probably wouldn't select. But the, the top score of the three staff evaluators was ISG at 90.67. The second highest score was Engen and Associates at 88.33. That's the top one, the very top, top score on the list. And, and the third ranked score would have been Widdeth. All of these firms can do the work, it is completely your choices to who you select. And I think it's, ultimately, though, our staff recommendation, and I'm gonna tell you that not only was ISG the top score average for all three of us, but all three of us individually scored ISG as the highest-ranked firm. individually scored ISG as the highest-ranked firm in this case. It's a very good proposal, as are the other top two or three, all very, very good proposals, and so it's very close. And so from our perspective, we're recommending that, that, that you award this agreement to ISG. Now, you might be asking, how are we gonna pay for it? Well, we had already restricted a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars from this, from, in previous council actions for, for this purpose. And so we, we have the money in our capital improvement plan that you've already restricted for it, so that, that money is there. ISG's total amount would range anywhere from seventy-nine thousand eight hundred dollars to eighty-four thousand eight hundred dollars. I listed it as eighty-four thousand eight hundred dollars because it's the top price. That's for a remodel. They would, if we built a new building, they would, they would do it for a little bit less, for seventy-nine thousand eight hundred dollars. What's different about ISG's number is that most of them, what they did was they gave us a, a kind of a pre-design cost, so all that information gathering upfront, the evaluation of the choices, the citizen engagement, all of that stuff is one thing, and then a percentage of the total construction costs, that's how almost everybody did it. ISG was a little bit different in that they basically put a maximum cap on it, so you know that it wouldn't be more, no matter what you built or how much you built, you could build a hundred thousand square foot building, we won't, but you could, and it would still cost eighty-four thousand dollars. And, you know, from my perspective, you know, when you're looking at sixteen firms like that and you kinda see costs anywhere from six, there's a couple of outliers. Most of them were in this, you know, seven to eight percent range of total construction cost, which is, is about right. When you see so many people in about the same range, you have a pretty good idea that that's what it costs for these services. So you can have some confidence that, that this is, this is kind of a market rate for these kinds of things. Ultimately, because of the composite ranking and because of the fact that they're ranked the highest amongst all three of the staff evaluators, our recommendation is to work with ISG. Like I said, it's completely your choice, and you can make the decision to hire a different firm, and, and that would be perfectly okay, because I promise you, every person you talk to is probably gonna have a different view about each one of these, each one of these things, which is why we all kind of independently, Shane and Jeff and I, did it, and then we came back and talked about it after, after the fact. So that's what I can tell you about what we learned and what we're recommending at this point. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about the proposals, Mayor.
So, I have a question that I got presented with something like right before I got in here tonight.
Okay.
That I wondered if we could talk about in our closed session, or can we not?
What's the, what's the nature of the topic?
And the nature of the topic is another option that we weren't presented with before.
I am not the city attorney, but I do not believe that that meets the qualification for a closed meeting. For a closed meeting would have to be things like personnel, legal advice about a lawsuit or a sale of a piece of property and the negotiations regarding that. We can't close the meeting just for anything we want.
Okay, so with that-
But ask, ask questions.
Well, let me ask you a question. Where do we, as a council, feel we can spend up to eighty-four thousand to help us design a building that we need, but we don't need that fanciest stuff? We need to get more back to simpler, less expensive. When I read this, I, I thought to myself, that is one of the stupidest things I ever heard, spending that kind of money for designing and putting together surveys and stuff for a building.
A lot of it, George, came because what I recollect anyways is when we had that meeting, there is a lot of discussion by you and other members as to if they, if the numbers from ISG were accurate or whatever, that if you could believe their, their numbers. And then there is also discussion as to just trying to calm the waters to people. Because if you remember right-
Eighty-four thousand dollars is gonna calm the waters?
Hey, I brought it up right at the very beginning. If we wanna spend part of our hundred and forty-four thousand dollars to do this, I wasn't gonna fight it. I'm totally with you. Do we need to spend this money? But we need to start to work together as a community then towards this whole project because we just keep batting our heads against the wall. People keep saying we sold things out from under them, we didn't have meetings, we didn't have input. You know, if you go back and read articles and that in the Tracy paper, it started probably in October or November, that there were discussions and everything about selling. That this, this couple did not wanna come into town, and people didn't want them there.
I'm not talking about that, Jerry.
That was their main concern.
Okay, hang on, we'll just-
But that's where this all started, George, is we had how many people in the gym?
We need to rein it in, then.
Hey, you two, hang on just one second, because, Crystal, will you make copies of this for me?
Yeah.
I've, I've got a question here.
What's, what's your question, Mayor?
Including Pear. Yeah, including Pear.
What's your question, Mayor?
My question?
Yeah.
Well, I, because, because of this idea that got brought to me, I'm gonna have her make copies so that all of us can see it.
So that I can think about it before she brings it in front of me.
It is the one that Dale Johnson came up with for redoing the Ken super value.
Okay, so we're, we're, we're back to that.
Well, we're not back to it, because we never got it before.
Well, the, the committee, the citizen committee did, and actually George was on that committee as well.
We did not.
Yes, we did. Yeah, we did. You can look at the notes and actually record it, in fact, I actually recorded the meeting. There was multiple options that was looked at by the citizen committee. That one was, in particular, was one of them. We actually did a tour of that building as well, and you were there. And, and so that was valued, evaluated as part of the citizen committee, and when we brought the recommendations back from the citizen committee, they felt that that option was too large and that they were concerned about it being more than what we needed. And so what they ended up with the choices on was a liquor store building or, you know, building on to this one or a new building. I mean, so ultimately, the citizen committee decided that that wasn't something that they wanted to recommend to you, and so we didn't bring it to you.
You know why? Nope, I'm not done here. Why they recommended not to do that, 'cause they had six hundred thousand or some, eight hundred thousand something remodeling that building, and the price to do that was not that much.
It's like three hundred and seventy-five.
So this is, this is where I thought that money that we spent was, that ISG come up was gonna cost, how much ever it was, I forget, I don't have that paper with me, six or eight hundred thousand to remodel that building, and I said, those numbers aren't right. You know they're not right, 'cause you were, you and Jeff were presented to them.
I don't know what, no, those numbers are made up, George.
No, not the, not the ones from-
The three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar number is a completely fabricated number. I don't know where it came from. I don't know what it's based on, other than just a guess by a contractor in town. That's the truth, and you know it.
Oh.
And in addition to that, and I'm gonna be quite frank with you, you've already received a memo from Matt about this. You can't just give a contract over a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to somebody. You can't do it.
So we're not given a contract?
You have to, you have to, you have to put it out for bid.
We're not given a contract.
But if we're buying, if he's doing everything, and we're buying a building from him, you can't do that.
Complete.
And plus, it has a police station with it.
I'm just telling you what happened, in terms of what happened with the whole process.
I, I guess one of the problems I've got, council, Mayor Council, is we had a steering committee, okay? And I heard time after time that we did this survey, and now we're doing another survey. Why are we doing another survey?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Okay, did, did we do a survey during the steering committee? We had it in the paper, we had it, why are we doing-
Or citizen survey, okay.
Why are we doing another survey?
We don't have to do another survey.
But it's in the RFP.
It's, yeah, we wanted to get citizen feedback.
Didn't we get that the first time?
The survey was done before that meeting, and I don't feel like all those people that came to that meeting felt like their questions were answered or were, were heard or whatever. 'Cause that's why we just, we had, we're the ones that said what to have in the RFP. We're the ones that said to include this survey.
This is what you approved.
I, I agree with you. I don't think we need to do all this. You know, if, but people keep saying, and I'm saying people because it isn't just one or two, people keep saying that they're not being heard, they're not being asked, they're, you know, that was sold out from under them, they can't, they can't get past that, and so this is where this kind of came from, was to try to get people to feel like, okay, we'll do this survey, we'll get everybody's involvement, hopefully people will remember it this time. Or I'm gonna have Pear look up at his old thing, starting in October, and do a little timeline as to when we all discussed this, what all was done, who all was meeting and everything. 'Cause do I wanna spend eighty-four thousand dollars on this out of the hundred and forty-four? I'd rather this towards the cost of the bill.
Hey, let me ask you this. What happened to our steering committee? Why was that dissolved? Why, why do we no longer have? I thought that steering committee was gonna be here until-
It's not a citizen-
I thought that steering committee was gonna be here until the last nail was pounded. And what happened?
The committee was formed on a short-term basis to provide recommendations on what to do about a community center, and it did its work. That doesn't mean that it can't continue to meet, but at this point, we felt it was important to bring back things to city council for city council to decide.
But wasn't the steering committee supposed to be doing that, Eric?
Doing what?
Bringing it back to the council?
They did, they, they did that. We did that. We presented that to you in February. You wanted that deadline in February, not you, because that was the previous council, but the previous council specifically said they wanted that late February deadline for, for their input, which is what we did. We did exactly what you asked us to do.
Okay, this design we have here, which presented to you and Jeff, I was told about it and about how much it would cost, three hundred and seventy-five thousand, complete. Kind of set up the way you wanted. It never came to us as a council to decide on, it never came to the steering committee. Why was that?
It did come to the steering committee, George.
At six hundred or eight hundred thousand.
There was a tour of that building. You were there.
I know I was.
You walked around, the citizen committee talked about it.
But it come back with false numbers on what it would cost to do. That's the part I'm arguing.
These aren't false numbers. These are the numbers based on this, on the study that you commissioned, you approved, you voted for.
But I didn't want to.
Well, then why didn't you vote against it, council member?
Watch it here. You're crossing the line.
Okay, so regardless, is it not an option that we can explore?
You can, absolutely. You can explore any option you want.
Because eighty-four thousand, that's like almost half of the cost of, I mean, granted the price is up a bit because the lumber went up, you know, you can't, but eighty-seven thousand would be like half the cost, and a half, a third of the bill.
Eighty-four thousand, eight hundred, eight, eight hundred and eighty-four thousand is what ISG said it would cost to remodel that building, and the number that we got at that time was three hundred and seventy-five thousand. Now I wanna know why we have to come with this number when we had the other number.
Because the other number, because the three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar number isn't real.
How do you know that?
How do you know it's real?
'Cause he gave you that price.
He didn't give me that price. We had a ten-minute meeting with them, and he said, and we said, how much do you think this is cost, gonna cost? And he said, I don't know, I don't know, maybe three hundred and fifty or, I don't know. You know, I mean, that's, that's not a bid, that's not a price, council member, that's not.
Eric, you blindsided us with something that was way more reasonable, and I think it stinks, and I'm just about ready to walk out.
So why can't, so why can't we explore this option?
You can, you can explore any option you want.
You still got one huge problem with doing this building.
What?
Where are you gonna park? That's been everybody's biggest complaint. We have to be able to park in front, we have to be able to park close.
Where did they park when they were?
Well, they were all around there, and everybody complained about parking then, so now you're gonna take the bank's parking, you're gonna take Mark Evers' parking, you're gonna take the accounting office, the dentist's parking.
Where did they park when they were at senior's, right over there in the corner?
Right, so, but everybody complained that they had a, if we move it down here, they're gonna have to walk half a block to a block. It's like parking has always been the biggest complaint about this whole thing.
And if that's okay, we can, Mark Evers' parking lot there that he also owns.
So if that, if parking's an issue, then we shouldn't be even thinking about east of here.
Well, that's fine by me.
Yeah, I mean, if that's the issue, let's forget about east of here. Let's forget about this Masonic parking lot if, if we're docking parking. We know there's no parking there.
Can't they park behind the building?
There's about six spots, maybe.
Max, and if you're gonna have the police department there, you're gonna have to have probably two to three spots just set aside for police department.
And what's wrong with this parking lot right here?
There's not a darn thing wrong with it, but everything, everybody has ever talked about, the multipurpose center has always been parking, parking. They have to be able to, they didn't want it here, 'cause it, well, you can't park in front here, and there's a parking lot. It's the same thing, there's a parking lot there, a parking lot there, and a parking lot there, if it would have been in the, in this building.
So you're saying, Dave, we need to spend eighty-four thousand plus whatever to do?
I didn't say a darn thing about eighty-four thousand dollars. I'm just saying, everybody's bitching constantly about parking, and now we're gonna go park on the street, and you're gonna take care of everybody's-
I think we're getting off the track, I think we're getting off the track here. If, if this is what we should be exploring, maybe we should do that before we go into the eighty-four thousand and six hundred, whatever. I think we should look into this if, if, if nothing else.
Well, Grant, I'm a little puzzled that, that why the super, old super value buildings coming up now, because it just, it just-
I think you're talking, yeah.
The original report we had from ISG and, and that no one seemed to have any interest in that.
Well, that's because this wasn't presented to us.
The building was presented as an option.
The building, not this particular situation.
But I, I myself, I don't know how anyone's keeping anything straight, 'cause I myself am getting confused as to a citizens committee and a steering committee and whatever.
I think it's the same thing, Drew. I think it's the same thing, is it?
The committee.
Citizens committee and the steering committee?
The reason nobody looked at-
The committee said this was not an option they wanted to look at.
Because they looked at the eight hundred and eighty-four thousand dollar price tag to remodel it.
No, there was other, it was, it was other things, George, that they didn't want that building, 'cause it was parking. It was that it was so large. It was, I know some of them didn't wanna share the space with the, the police department. Why is this now getting thrown in with the police? Yes, I, somewhere I heard about it, and I'm not in any of these steering committees or anything, but somewhere I heard about it.
I'm not there, and I never heard about it.
Well, I did. I can't tell you who it was that told me about it, but they didn't wanna be sharing the space with the police department.
They're not sharing it with them, because it's completely two separate buildings.
There's a wall between, odd building, just a wall between.
Well, right now, what we're deciding is if we're gonna grant the, one of these options for this RFP, right?
That's-
That's what we're-
That's on the table, although you can, like I said, you can do whatever you wish or take no action at all.
I'd like to make a motion to table it until we have time to research this other thing.
I agree with that.
Okay, so I have a question. I have no problem tabling it, but, okay, so we go with this, this drawing, but we can't grant the one contractor this job.
So we're not granting, we're buying a finished building. We're purchasing a finished building.
Okay, so then who-
For no more than a flat dollar amount.
Okay, so then the other option is, do we need to go out there and get someone to draw up a plan? draw up a plan like this for a new building? Because you know what? I don't know about you guys, but I remember a lot of people saying they're not even donating money to an old building, they only want new. So then do we, I mean, we, we've got to move off this dime. It's just we take two steps forward, two steps back.
Well, we're not really taking two steps back because our other two options was remodeling the old liquor store and building a new liquor store.
So how are you going to compare?
Same two options.
So how are you going to compare? What it's going to cost to redo the, if we are going to choose this option versus the other option? How are we going to get higher dollars? Because you're saying you're going to ask Dale to get, give us a quote on this or something. He has to give us a dollar amount?
What he would sell it for. Yep.
What he would sell the building. So now we're buying another building.
Sold finished, not, or build to suit, I guess is what you would call it, like you see signs all over. Owner will build to suit. Sell it to you for, build it how you want it, and then sell it to you for X amount of dollars.
That's a contract of greater one-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars. If Matt were here, he would tell you that that's not.
Why is that if you're buying a building, if you're buying?
I'm going to defer to Matt. I think we should ask him that question.
If you're, if you're buying a house, somebody's going to build you a house for three-hundred thousand or five-hundred thousand, I don't care. They're going to build you a house for that amount.
An individual is not.
Then you buy it and move in. You don't have to bid it.
An individual is not subject to the same state purchasing rules that we are. That's why. The city has limits. We have laws we have to follow. All I'm saying is, is that you want to ask Matt the question, can you do that?
We do need to ask Matt, Ben, because it's like, can you buy a building from somebody?
It's a little more complicated than that when, when, when George is talking about building to suit. That is not the same thing as buying a built.
I need to change the words so it matches up with what you're trying to say.
And, and what, if you're changing the words to get the outcome that you want, you're not going to get the best legal advice. So my suggestion to you is, is that we explain the situation to him and ask him, and if it's something you can do that doesn't require bidding, that would be the question.
If we can buy, purchase a building, set up the way we want without bidding.
I don't know if that's the right question, but I think that it would be important, since you're getting legal advice, to do that in a closed meeting. And unfortunately, he's not here tonight because I didn't think that we would need him. Because we usually don't ask him to come because the costs associated with it. If I'd known about this, I probably would have invited him. So.
So my question is, is for that meeting. I'm just sitting here trying to think when Ken Witt was here, he was talking about, and please help me here, Ron, some company that, there we, there we go. You know, do we need to, I mean, are we all of a sudden going to be like the general or whatever, where we're going to be accepting the different bids or any, everything, or?
I guess I'm not sure where you're going, Jerry. We're buying the building finished.
I know, but I want to know if I'm going to buy or vote to buy that building finished for four-hundred thousand dollars, I want to know Morton is going to tell me he can put up a brand-new building for three-hundred-and-twenty-five. Because then my vote would maybe go a different direction.
If we would ask him, they would put a bid together. But we need, ask, tell them what we want. How many square feet? Four thousand, five thousand, two thousand?
We can't do that either because it's going to be over one-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars. You can't go to one company and say, "Build this building for me." It's against the state law.
That's not what we're asking. We're asking for a bid.
You can't, you have to ask, asking for a bid is not the same thing as a quote. You're talking about a quote. A bid is a formal process that you have to go through. Asking somebody for a quote is a different thing. It is completely different in state contracting law.
I, I guess I'm, I'm confused here too, Jerry. I, we're, we're arguing about something. We don't even know prices.
Yeah.
We have no, maybe the ISG price will come in so high, we'll say, wow. Holy smokes.
Was that why?
How are we comparing? What are we comparing here? I, I don't get it. Don't get it.
What would you like to do, council? There's, there is a motion on the table to table it, so.
Well, I, I just want to say that I've said all along that I am committed to being open-minded about this issue. And I'm committed to trying to find the best solution for the citizens of our home. We go back to that report that INS or ISG put together. I'll be honest, I was really attracted to the figures that the engineers put together on remodeling the old liquor store and the fact that they said that it could be done. To me, it looked like a reasonable option. But I know there were some strong opinions about having a new building, and I agreed that I would consider that option, whether we build a new building on South Street, tore down the old liquor store and built a new one there, or built in addition a new community center on the east side of this building. And I thought that, that the committee, the citizens steering committee, I was sitting there just listening at the last meeting that they had, and when I walked out of there, and not, everyone wasn't jumping up and down and saying. But there seemed to be a consensus at that night, there were ten people there, feeling that remodeling the liquor store was at least worth looking at. And then, so we went on from that step, and some reservations were expressed later about remodeling the liquor store. But we, we agreed as a council that we were going to, we were going to consider, get a request for proposal on two options, the new building and the remodel of the liquor store. And there didn't seem to be much interest in remodeling the super value building at that time. So. I, I feel, you know, you know, George and Ron, you know, I, I, I didn't envision a couple of months ago the amount of money that we'd have to spend in planning and so forth in design as what's outlined here too. But at the same time, there is some value to hiring a professional architect and design firm. I, I think last year, the city tried to do without those services in remodeling the new liquor store, and I believe it cost the city money. So I, I, I'm okay with, if, if you guys are uncomfortable with these requests for proposal and want to table it for another night, I, I'll go along with that. But I, I, I do see value in what we have in front of us.
Which thing in front of you?
The request for proposals, the four-hundred-some pages of, that we all spent time studying this afternoon.
So if I get this straight here, we're going to spend eighty-four thousand dollars, let's say we pick ISG, I'm just using, we're going to spend eighty-four thousand dollars, and they're going to go through this RFP. We have no clue what the prices are going to be, going to be when they're all done. Is that correct?
When you say price to build the building?
Yeah, we have no.
No. We, we don't, we don't know any of that on any of it.
We get to that point, what happens if we say it's too much? We've already spent eighty-four thousand dollars.
Okay, and my understanding is that.
What do you mean? We, we don't spend the eighty-four thousand?
My understanding is that we're, if we approve a request for proposal for ISG, we're committed to twelve thousand dollars, not eighty-four thousand dollars.
What was the eighty-four? Someone brought up eighty-four thousand here.
Let me, that's the total price. There's two part, there's two components to this. There's the pre-design component, which is eleven thousand and some change. And ultimately, that includes the citizen engagement piece of it, some space planning and things like that to help get to a decision about what the building is going to be. If at that point, you can't decide what you want the building to be, or you decide that we can't afford a building, or you decide that you want to do something different, you just stop. It's like any other project, you just stop.
That's the question I wanted answered, right there. I don't want to get into this and say, oh, we're going to spend a million dollars for this building, now we can't get out of it. I, I want to know if, if we go into this thing and it's costing more money than we're really anticipating, that we just stop it.
It, it sounds to me like what we need to do before we even approve any of these is ask the same, the basic question that hasn't been asked yet. How much can you afford? And I've been waiting for somebody to ask that question because we've been, kind of been thinking about it, actually quite a bit, you know, internally with the staff. And I think it would be completely appropriate if you wanted to pause this discussion and start talking about that so we can put together a budget. Because I certainly would like it, to be honest, because I don't know, when we, when we did this originally, and, you know, I'm sure Jerry would remember, you know, what we had contemplated doing was taking that one-hundred-and-forty-four thousand dollars and remodeling some space here in this building in order to get a new senior center for those folks. And this whole discussion morphed into a huge community center. And I, I don't want to even start talking about why we don't need a new police department, for God's sakes, but we don't. This is about the community center and replacing what the seniors lost over there. It's not about building all of this new stuff. And so it's gotten mushroomed huge. I would be perfectly fine with scaling it back because frankly, I still don't, not entirely sure how we could afford it.
I, I think we went wrong, and Jerry brought it up. We should continue to label it the MPC. What we went wrong is a community center. That's where we went wrong, I think. And then all of a sudden, it just mushroomed.
It's, it's what people wanted, you know? I mean, you know, people said, gosh, you know, first it was remodel the liquor store, then we want to build a new building. And I, and I get that people want a brand-new shiny thing. There are questions about what we can afford, and we should, and I, my suggestion to you at this point, for what it's worth, is, is to, you didn't even have to table it, you just don't have to do anything tonight. But if you want to give me direction to bring back a discussion about what we can afford, I'd be happy to do that. And then that would draw some parameters around things. I think it would limit some choices, that's for sure.
I'd say do it, for you to budget out, budget it out.
I agree with that.
I, I guess I just don't know how we can discuss it unless we know what this is going to cost us.
I think that's a fair point.
I just, you know, and then let's look at options. That's just my opinion. We're sitting here, we're talking this, that. We don't know what this thing's going to cost us.
We keep going in, in circles, and people are just going to get more and more frustrated as they sit here and listen to us go in circles and not move forward at all. So I guess if we need to get some dollar amounts as to what we can afford, you know, it's, it's not like we can't get. You know, we, we can do this down the road if we need to.
Yeah.
But it definitely, this thing has morphed into a much, much bigger. What do we say? Project than what we had originally thought. When we had the one-hundred-and-forty-four, we thought, okay, we have one-hundred-and-forty-four to do some remodeling. All of a sudden, now we're looking at, I mean, something that could be a half a million dollars. I don't think we can afford something for a half a million dollars. I don't know if we can afford something right now for three-hundred-and-fifty or, or whatever. You know, and I think maybe people have gotten their hopes up that they're going to get more than what they had. That's not what we promised. We promised the seniors we would give them something. There isn't the MPC right now, and that's why I shouldn't say just seniors, but that is who we promised, that we would make sure we would take care of them, that they would have a place. They're not the only ones that use the MPC. We're looking at maybe just being able to afford to replace what they had, not double or triple their space and their.
And I think that's all they're asking, Jerry, really. They're only asking what they lost. And I think that's fair to the people. I don't think they want to build a roller rink or anything like that.
I'm going to be candid with you. We presented that option. It was the second floor of the VMC. The alternative to that option is the first floor of the VMC and putting the PD on the second floor. We can go back to that. I, I actually think it's a pretty good option, and it's a lot less expensive than a new building. But if, if, if you would like us to bring back some figures as far as what we think the most, you know, a budget would look like, and then we can figure out what we can fit into it, that, I think that would help.
And when you do that with the budget, I do think, because there's, there's some that are already looking at trying to do some fundraising and stuff like that. I think we need to put a goal out there that's included in the budget that, okay, this is what we're hoping to be able to do, and this is the goal for the fundraising for you guys to help fundraise. I think that might at least move us forward a little bit because right now we are just kind of circling.
Yeah, we were.
Are you okay with that?
Well, I think we need to, to look at this too, Jerry. I mean, if.
We can't.
We, I think we need to, as Sethi said, look at our options, and this is an option.
We can, we can, we can put even more options on the table, you know? I mean, the feeling from the council and from the citizen committee was that we wanted to narrow our options, not broaden them.
I was just going to say.
And that was the reason why we are, are the way, where we are at. And, and I, I, you know, we can take as long as we want on this, but I think it is important. I think a financial discussion would narrow the options, for sure.
Well, and I didn't mean to like make another problem, but I just thought for that dollar amount, and we have twice the things.
I think, I think that dollar amount is not realistic.
We'll find out. So, well, I don't know. Do we need a motion for you to do?
No, I can just do it. We've got it. We, I'll tell you when I, I'm going to suggest that we do it, okay? Because we have a study session the first Monday in June on the budget. And so I can bring it back on that Monday at this, as part of the budget discussion, if you want, if that makes sense. That's about three, that's three, four weeks away. Or we can do it sooner if you want, but that might be a little tough for us because of the Memorial Day weekend and everything.
Do we have a study session on the seventh?
Yeah, we do. It's part of the, it's, it's our budget study session, the first one.
And I'll second the motion to table Resolution 2021-55.
Do we have a second?
That was a second.
That was a second.
Well, I got lost, sorry. All right, first and second in discussion. Roll call, please. Tom?
Aye.
Landay?
Aye.
Jeez.
Aye.
Kooten?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye.
Mayor Corman?
Aye.
The next item, mayor and council, is the first quarter budget amendment. Basically, this is kind of some cleanup from the budget. The net impact is zero, and I'm going to let Krista do a quick presentation on, on what this is about. do a quick presentation on, on what this is about.
So with all of the changes that were made with the new accounting system to our chart of accounts, a lot of the budget was some estimates. So Eric and I sat down and went through the budget versus actual through March 31st data, with March 31st data, and found a few things that we would like to adjust in the budget. Few highlights, we doubled some wages for one of the Public Works employees, so we were adjusting that down. We increased the seasonal wages for two seasonal employees with Public Works. We didn't have enough budgeted there. We had to correct the budget for the snow removal. It really just got put in the wrong account, so we were just making that light change. That netted to zero. With the pool being closed last year, there are about $4,000 in pool liner repairs that we need to make this year, so we added that to the budget. We did end up removing the hangar project at the airport, because that's on hold, won't be happening in 2021. And then the last small one, there was an airport revenue that was inadvertently doubled, so we took out that revenue. Like Eric said, the net effect of these adjustments is zero on the budget. Any questions?
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-56 for the first quarter budget amendment.
Second.
Second any discussion? Roll call, please. Schmidt.
Aye.
Shones.
Aye.
Teigs.
Aye.
Kootman.
Aye.
Tal.
Aye.
Landite.
Aye.
Mayor Cornyn.
Aye.
The next item, mayor and council, is 2021-57, sale of surplus property, and Shane's going to talk about this.
I guess we've been doing some cleaning. There's some more items that we've found outside of vehicles between surplus from the liquor store, what they didn't use when they opened the new facility last year. They got some deals on some items in bulk, and some of the bulk items didn't get used, so there's, there's little bits here and there for that, and then we have a vehicle that's been in the city's possession, I think, since it was taken out of service with the military, that we don't use, so it's the old yellow Dodge, as most of you may have seen around town for, forever, but just trying to clean house. Say, I have a list attached of, we're looking at getting rid of, just need your blessings on it, put it up on surplus sale.
Can I just ask, with the stainless steel tables and sinks and the shelving units, that's not from the MPC?
No, that's all. That actually came out of the old food and fuel, is where those.
I just wanted to make that clear, so people don't think we're selling off equipment now.
There is nothing from the MPC in this item.
And this is just the one you always post online?
We'll probably use surplus services through the state again.
Yeah, okay.
It's just easier, and it doesn't matter if there's conflict interest or anything like that. If someone wanted to vote for it in town, wanted to purchase it, then it's all done through the state. We have nothing, other than they'll cut us a check in the end, so.
Shane, do we use that squad car over here in the parking lot?
The office staff uses that for their fleet vehicle.
I'm not so sure, Councilmember. We shouldn't include that as part of the sale at some point in the future, right? We, we, we rarely use it, and, you know, we could always reimburse people mileage if they travel, and so it may actually cost less to reimburse mileage than continue to maintain that thing.
We still have the airport vehicle out there too, if somebody needs it, right?
Yeah, the van's out there, yeah. Or we'll be back out there just getting fixed.
We want to wait on adding the, that car? You guys can just verify things?
I had asked at one point what it has cost to maintain it. I don't know if I asked you that question or asked somebody else. I don't remember. But, but if you want to include it on this list, we certainly, we certainly could include it and then pull it off if we-
If we've been using it, I guess it doesn't get moved. Hey, don't all that work-
I don't think, I think we rarely use it.
That's had a flat tire for how many weeks now?
I think we rarely use it.
I thought it was holding up the building for a while there.
I, I have no concern including it on the list. Do you, Shane?
No, if that's what you want to do. Oh, it's better than coming up with one item later. It's easier to just put it all in one bulk.
Thank you, Shane.
Shane, how about, what's the plan on the extra stuff that's in the liquor store? The old liquor store, the glassware, and the, it just seemed like there's a lot of stuff that we walk through that, or maybe it's not even-
Right now, it's almost impossible to walk through there. So until the multipurpose center issues figured out, and we know what we're going to use there, I think we should just have a big sale on the end of that.
Okay, that makes sense.
Is that going as a garage sale, or does that have to go through?
I think, I think a live auction might be better on that one.
Yeah, I think so. It'd take about seven flat vans.
Well, I'd make a motion to add the vehicle sitting out there to the surplus sale. Suppose we should do that first, and then we can add, then we can actually do that resolution.
I think you can do it all at the same time.
Can we?
Yeah.
And then I'll make a motion to, after that's added, then make a motion to approve 2021-57 for the sale of the surplus property.
Second.
Chris, can second any discussion? Roll call, please. Kootman.
Aye.
Teigs.
Aye.
Tal.
Aye.
Landite.
Aye.
Shones.
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Cornyn.
Aye.
Shane's got the next two, so the next one is the pay app for RNG Construction. It's the first pay app.
The pay app one, so let me see, the first, first pay app for the Phase 3A2 street project. It's not a whole lot of items there. A lot of it's tree removal and, you know, some of the milling and, say the cutoff was, say a couple weeks ago for the, for the project, so they didn't really start going into it real hard before the cutoff of this pay up, so. I don't know if you had any questions on that.
The only question I have is, how is it going?
It's going all right. We had one service, we couldn't quite find where it goes, and I think they're working on another one by Mayor's House, where that shop drain is. Like they're die testing that, but other than that, it's been going well otherwise, so.
It's been dry. That helps them.
Amen. By the way, thank you for the communication update that you sent out on the iPad, Eric.
Welcome.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-58 for the pay app, one for RNG Construction.
Second.
First and second any discussion? Roll call, please. Schmidt.
Aye.
Tal.
Aye.
Landite.
Aye.
Teigs.
Aye.
Kootman.
Aye.
Shones.
Aye.
Mayor Cornyn.
Aye.
Next item is just authorization to execute a grant. This is for a $9,000 that we received as part of the latest COVID round, and we have to execute the grant agreement to receive $9,000.
Yep. And that'd be for the airport.
It'll be for the airport.
I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 2021-59.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? Roll call, please. Kootman.
Aye.
Tal.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Landite.
Aye.
Teigs.
Aye.
Shones.
Aye.
Mayor Cornyn.
Aye.
At the end of my list? That's it. That's the end of the list. We just have a closed meeting left, mayor. That's it.
Do we have a motion to adjourn this meeting to go into the-
I've got one. Eric, oh, we coming on that, the hangers out there. Have we got, have you got together, you and Jeff, on?
We haven't gotten together. Our, our plan is to get together with the, with the folks that are interested in it, and I apologize. We have not had that meeting yet. Do you want to give them a quick update on that, Jeff?
Yep, I actually got all the phone numbers I need now, and then I'm just waiting for the actual email address or the phone number for the guy from Premium Plant Services. And once I get that, then I will, then I will call all of them and see when we can actually meet, whether it's by Zoom or in person, preferably. I'll make a motion to close the regular session and go into the closed meeting.
Call them in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.